Let's see a car coming to me. All right, thank you. Hey, you coming to meeting this morning or this afternoon? All right, sound great. All right, bye. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
We're gonna call our meeting door, this is our second meeting in March. We're gonna ask everybody if you will, put your phone on vibrate or turn them off. We're gonna ask Supervisor Gerald Stein to leave us in the pledge. And we're gonna ask our comptroller, the son, to leave us in the pledge. All right?
Let us pray. Father Lord, we thank you for another good day, Lord, being able to get up this morning and come to our meeting. But Father, we just pray for our country, Lord, as many things are happening in Ukraine and Russia and overseas in general, Lord. But we pray, the Lord, that things will come to where it be peaceful, Lord. But most of all, Lord, we just ask for your blessings here in Madison County, Lord, as we continue to make decisions, Father, to help move the county forward in a way, Lord, that would be pleasing to you. Father, we just ask and pray these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Good morning. I pledge salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, ready? I thank you up.
Yes, Mr. President, you have before you the March 7th Board Minutes. I would ask if there are no changes. The board please approve said minutes.
She got a motion in the second? All in favor? Say aye. Concerned citizens, we have Kate.
I'm Benton Mosley, Kate's husband. She's having a procedure done this morning. So I thank y'all very much for letting me be with y'all. I have a couple of questions for y'all today, and maybe you could give me some guidance. I'm actually from Florence, and I'm looking to transition up to y'all's county and to Madison County. My wife is from up here. She's spent her whole life up here. She still works up here. But I bring something with me on my transition. I own a pumpkin patch in town, and I grew up on a Christmas tree farm and an agritourism business. And in Florence, I have a pumpkin patch. And I've looked at several pieces of land in Madison County, but I don't know if there's been anything like that. And that's what's concerning to me is I don't know if it's something... I've tried to read all the bylaws and read the zonings, but I don't want to take a step forward and land if that's something that is going to be an issue with the supervisors. When it comes to the pumpkin patch, it's a great family event. I won't talk it up very much, but you know, I hope to transition into Christmas trees one day and just a fun, family, outdoor event. Everything's family oriented. You know, maybe a movie night at the farm during the summertime or something. But it's very, it'd be a very seasonal business.
When you say pumpkin patch?
Yes, sir.
You say talking about one acre of the pumpkin? Or you talking about 100 acres of pumpkin?
No, sir. I generally plant about six acres of pumpkins. And I'm a Mississippi ag guy. I'm in the, with the ag department. But I try to grow more than half of my pumpkins. I also purchase pumpkins I have to bring in from out of state if I can't grow enough. And that's kind of the same for Christmas trees as well. I love growing Christmas trees, but I also have to bring some in from out of state as well.
Hey, Scott, would that be agricultural or would that be commercial? What are you talking about doing?
Mr. President, Board of Supervisors, that's in the ag and R1 district where he's talking about. I believe I talked with their wife the other day. And it would have to go through a conditional use process and a public hearing through the Planning, Commission and Board of Supervisors to be approved. So we are getting to the point of where we gotta start the process paperwork. But I did talk with his wife Friday, I believe it was Friday.
I might not heard you, but you already got the property located, what you talking about buying?
Yes, sir. There's a piece that I have in mind. The particular piece that I have in mind, it's... And the way I've looked at it on y'all's maps, it's about half and half. It's a 40-acre parcel, and about half's on the R1, but the other half is on agricultural. The R1 side was the issue. That's the side that I just wanted to clear up everything on. I didn't want there to be any gray area.
Okay. How much traffic you say that gonna bring? Do you have any idea?
Yes, sir. Seasonally, during the month of October, I shoot for 250 families a day, so that's 250 cars. That particular road, it seems to be, have good frontage. I would try to make them in and out. I think that's where my day job would play into affect a lot. I'm Farm Bureau's safety man, so I try to keep it as well organized as I can. Christmas events, that does not attract a whole lot of traffic. And then anything else that would be seasonal throughout the year, the three, maybe four events throughout the year, I don't think there would be a traffic concern. But pumpkin season is the only traffic concern.
Okay. Sheldon?
Mr. President, I talked to Ms. Mosley last week and advised her to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And my understanding is that the concern here is to go through that process. You do not have time to plant for this season. So what he is asking you to do is to do something outside of your normal process. Okay? I think they've already been advised to go to Planning and Zoning and have chosen to come here to appeal to you.
Yes, sir. That was my only concern. I miss... Or I'm sorry, one of my concerns, I missed my March 15th USDA deadline for crop insurance and stuff. And that's gonna weigh pretty hard on me for planting pumpkins and Christmas trees. But I don't, time was not on my side coming to get ground ready and having to wait for the next meeting.
All right.
I'm pretty sure, my kids are grown now, but I'm pretty sure I bought pumpkins somewhere in Madison County at a farm, and it was a lot of fun, just saying.
I believe that's in your area, Sheila, or that's my area?
Where are you?
It's my, you need car park.
I think it's Mr. Carl.
It's on the north side of Yandle Road, across from Hampton Hills.
Oh, okay.
Car for after here.
How many acres you have there?
It's a 20... 29 acre plot. And the one advantage that I have when it comes to the land is it's in a flood zone. So I don't think, I don't think it'll affect my pumpkins and my Christmas trees, but I can't, I don't think a house will be, you know, in a real good spot there.
Well, I mean, the activity, the activity that would be of concern that sends you through planning and zoning is not the planting.
Yes, sir.
It would be the harvesting and selling.
Yes, sir.
You can plant anything you want on your land. But you can't, you know, you can't operate the operation that you want without going through planning and zoning. If you have time, you can go out there and plant. I don't need to know you planting. They don't need to know you planting and file your applications. I don't think you're gonna have any problem.
Yes, sir. I sure, I was trying to do everything by the books. And I've had a really good start. My family's Christmas tree farm's been closed about 10 years, and I said I would open it up again one day. And I opened up the pumpkin patch two years ago on some leased land and where I found myself spending quite a bit of money on driveways and parking only for my lease not to be renewed. So I kind of got a little salt in my wounds there. So that's why I was wanting to move forward and purchasing my own place. But I wanted to make sure it was something that y'all would be on board with or even entertain the offer of accepting. And that's what I appreciate.
All right.
I don't see any problem with, Father, you have to go out there and plant my trees and plant my pumpkins.
Yes, sir. Well, I sure do.
Worst thing could happen, you just won't have a whole lot of trees and pumpkins for yourself.
That's right.
Other than that, I think you'll be all right. Just go through planning and zoning, get with Scott.
Yes, sir.
And that's all you need.
Mr. Carl, I sure do appreciate it.
Right. And now if you run into a snag?
Yes, sir.
You know who your supervisor is.
Yeah, just go to Mr. Carl, huh?
Just call him.
Well, I sure do appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you again.
All right, next scheduled item is public hearing. Notice of increase.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. President, I think the Honorable Attorney candidate is here to take over on that.
Oh, oh, okay. Who else you got?
Joe Earl Evans has signed up.
Joe Earl Evans is here for item four.
Okay.
He's here for item four.
He did not identify what he's here for.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Morning.
We need to enter a public hearing for two increases that are on the agenda today. So we can get a motion and approval for that?
Motion.
Motion by Trey, second by Sheila. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
All right, item one pertains to the Geneva Thedford Estate and Roosevelt Willis Estate. And the second is for the Carey Trust Estate. So if anyone is here to discuss these, I ask that they come forward at this time.
Must not be anyone?
If not, then I will ask the board to close the public hearing and approve these increases.
Motion by Trey, second by Sheila. In discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right. Now, up number item four, we got abandonment of Swamp Road.
Supervisor Griffin, was that a motion to close the public hearing?
And approve it.
And approve it.
And approve it.
Okay. Thank you.
Abandonment of Swamp Road. All right. Sheldon?
I may have missed it. Have we opened the hearing?
Public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Motion?
Motion by Trey, second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearing now open.
Mr. President, Board of Supervisors, you may remember several months ago that two parties have approached the board discussing the possible abandonment of Swamp Road. This hearing was scheduled by you for discussion related to the request for abandonment of this road.
But they're not here today.
I believe attorneys representing both sides are here, and I think there's at least one area resident that is here for conversation. So how do you want to start? Do you want to go with the for or against?
Before we get into the public hearing, I got one question for our lawyer, right off. Swamp Road. Who says Swamp Road is a road? You got the supervisor here that have 47 years of knowledge of that area. That is not a road. The road manager got 20 years of knowledge saying it's not a road. So who says it's a road?
Hey. I defer to you. It's a factual question whether it's a road. There's a Supreme Court case.
There's what now?
Excuse me. There's a Supreme Court case, 1988, McDealy versus Jackson. And it says that protracted non-use for an extended period of time is sufficient in law to create presumption of abandonment of a road. So if it's not maintained by the county, if it's never been maintained by the county, if the county's never said it was a road, and it's not maintained as a road, it's not road. County road. So if you never declared it a road, and you never maintained it as a road, it's not road.
Well, I just say it. I got 47 years of knowledge that it hadn't maintained as a road.
Has it been declared as a county road?
I have no idea. 47 years back.
Cynthia just went to pull the registry.
It was not?
Cynthia just went to pull the road registry.
All right. If the registry shows it's a road, then you switch to the statute to determine if it's been abandoned. And the first thing that there, there's no primary access to any citizens to their homes on that road.
No.
Number one. Number two, if the traffic on the road has for a period of at least 10 consecutive years been of such low volume that there's no substantial purpose served to the public to declare it a road. And thirdly, if the board has for a period of at least five years not maintained the section as a part of the county road system, then you can abandon it. So the first question is, is a road, and I'm saying, if it's not on the county registry as a road, and you never maintain it as a road, then it's not a road.
All right. That's the question we need to get answered.
Well, that's the answer. If it is on the registry as a road?
Then we can go to the next.
Then you have a right to, you have an ability to abandon it for these three reasons I mentioned.
Yeah. Well, who go answer that first question? You go and get, somebody go and get the register.
Mr. President, the board secretary has gone upstairs to pull a copy of the road registry to answer your question.
Can we just move on to the next item?
That's what I was gonna suggest.
And wait till you come back. Only thing about it, Cynthia not here. It take a minute. All right, we can move to... Anybody else on that ride? Sheldon?
The other person is the Davenport family, and they are here for an item under Planning and Zoning.
They are, I am planning. All right, let's move on.
Got the answer.
You have the answer. You got the answer.
You got the answer.
But we may be able to finish this. Maybe we just finish this.
We got the answer.
All right.
Excuse me. On the 2000 Road Registry, Swamp Road was placed on the registry as a road.
2000?
Yeah. So it's a road in your registry.
Okay.
2000.
Is that road described, is the road we talking about, is it described as the road that they're talking about? Let me see it.
It is described as the road, the road that we call Swamp Road is not in our road registry, a named road. We maintain it as a named road, but it is not a named road. The section that is requested to be abandoned, part of that is Old Highway 51, and part of that is Swamp Road. And both of those are currently on the road registry.
All right. So I guess now we can go, it determined it's a swamp, it is a road, we can go to the next section.
Yes.
Or see and do we want to abandon. All right, public hearing now open. Who's next? Who coming up?
Yeah, one of the lawyers.
Let's get to decides that. Go ahead, Sheldon.
Which side do you want, the for abandonment or the against abandonment?
For, for the abandonment.
Morning. I'm Don McGraw. I'm here representing Julian Fayard and Bill Howe, who originally asked for the abandonment. They bought this property that the road runs through from Potlatch back just after Christmas. And we're seeking to have the road abandoned because it runs pretty much right through the middle of their properties. There are other landowners that use that road to access their lands west and south of the Fayard property. Fayard and Howe have cut a woods road from a point along Bill's south line over to the northwest line of one of the property owners, Mr. Poole, and proposed to run it further. So they're asking that it be abandoned, and then they're gonna, or moving the access for the people who use Swamp Road to the south line of their properties. I understand that the people who have used Swamp Road are not satisfied with what the woods road that has been built looks like. So that's probably an issue, but that's Mr. Fayard and Mr. Howe's position.
Okay, what, you saying, Don, your client done built another entries into there?
They built a woods road. I understand from Mr. Valentine, who represents the folks opposing the abandonment, that it's really a road that was just suitable for four-wheelers right now. So I don't know if my clients, I haven't talked to them about it, would be willing to upgrade it some so they can get trucks down it. But that's kind of where we are.
And that road on what side of the creek? Would be on the west side of the creek?
It starts, starts where B Rail, B Railroad runs kind of north, northwest up to the south. East corner of Bill Howe's property, but it splits just south of there and turns into Swamp Road. So Potlatch owns the land that crosses, and Potlatch has given an easement to come through them to get to the south line of Mr. Howe's property. And then from there, you run due west along the south line of Howe's property and Fayard's property.
Can you let me tell Matt?
Sure.
Don, do you have copies of that map?
Okay.
Tell me what you talking about.
It runs like that, and this is Potlatch property. Potlatch, Howe, Fayard. Opposing to transfer that to... They're cutting wood roads right here.
Where is that creek? Is that creek?
I don't know where that creek is.
It would be right there, right in there, I think. Yeah, that's it. I'm trying to see the road y'all cut through.
Yeah, they cut, they cut right there.
Okay, so it gets you on that side of the creek. Road's there. Okay. All right. Anybody else? Don, you through on that?
I'm through. Thank you.
Anybody else that want to speak on abandoning the road? All right, that'd be your time, Joe Earl. Put the mic down a little bit.
On that road, I'm on both side of that road. And I got a cow back there. And I do not want a public road back there.
That's coming from Old Highway 51, just about to the creek.
Just about to the creek.
Yeah, and I was back there Friday. Was on the other side of the creek a couple few months ago. All right, thanks, Joe Earl. Don't leave. I might have some question for you.
Okay.
After I hit the other side. Anybody else to speak on abandonment of the road? Not, if not, we'll go to the one that do not want it abandoned.
Mr. President, Board of Supervisors, I apologize. I thought y'all would have a map of all of this. Had a larger map last time. You didn't bring it, Don? The audio visual, the house there? Okay, I apologize for not having one for you. I will say that I represent two entities who do not wish it abandoned. There's a third entity called Cameron Hill Hunting Club that accesses land both from the south and from the north. There are two entities, Buzzard Roost Holdings, that have access on the south side of the property. And we need, y'all need to be aware that we're talking about two different pieces of property to be abandoned, or two different parts of the road, divided by, as Mr. Griffin was saying, a creek. You can't get across the creek on a regular basis. This road that we are calling a public road, I believe it was on the county registry, it was maintained for many, many years by Matt McDaniels, who was the, thank you, who was the... Is there a copy machine really close that we could make about 10 copies? Do you mind making us some copies there, Sharon? Thank you. There are several parts of what they're talking about abandoning. Potlatch is not represented here. Potlatch has only given an easement to Fayard. They have not given an easement to the Martins or to Mr. Dice, who owns Buzzard Roost Holdings. So all the negotiations been between Fayard and his partner, Fayard and Huff, and Potlatch when they were buying the 300 acres that we had had the lease on for some 50 years. They came in, bought the property, and are now seeking to shoot our access to the rest of our property by buying that 300 acres that they bought. The south half of the property comes off of Old 51, aka Swamp Road, aka Putnam Road, and runs due north, and then comes up to a T in this property that y'all will see in the map in just a couple of minutes. And then part of the property goes to the left to Mr. Martin's family property. They have 20 acres in the middle of the Horseshoe Hunting Club. That is, this is their only access, is the northern Swamp Road that is sought to be abandoned. You can't get to their property on the south side without crossing both Mr. Dice's property at the Buzzard Roost and Potlatch and Joe Earl. So that road on the south side needs to maintain publicly. And Mr. Joe Earl does not own all of that property. He said he owns property on both sides of it, which he does. But he does not own all the property on both sides going north. Both Potlatch, Buzzard Roost Holdings, and Mr. Joe Earl Evans, all three own part of that property on both sides of the property. Mr. Joe Earl owns property where the gate is. So if we abandon that, we're still gonna have to have some sort of easement for those other three people, the other three entities, including Cameron Hill Hunting Club, which holds the lease on all the Potlatch property up there, except for the 300 acres that was purchased by Mr. Huff and Mr. Fayard. So we've got the lease on that whole area in there. Coming in on the north side, that property is on a ridge and has been on a ridge for at least, I'm gonna say 70 or 80 years, that that property was actually in there. And that access has been down into that swamp since Patrick's granddaddy owned all of that property and was farming that and had... all of that property and was farming that and had that farmland and that timberland down in there along the edge of the swamp. And it's on a ridge and it's not in the best of condition, but it's hot and it's packed and it's got county gravel on it, and has had county gravel on it in many places for many years. When I said Mr. Matt McDaniel's maintained that property, he was on the road crew for Madison County before he retired, and he maintained that road because it was part of his hunting club and he had property at the end of it. So when Mr. Mac left, the, uh, Board of Supervisor was an employee, is my understanding, believe it, this is all history to me, I wasn't around when it was actually done, but I know that we have actually used that road as Cameron Hill Hunting Club since we were established in nineteen sixty-nine, and that's when our club started using it. Now, at this point, if we don't have an access to the backside of our property that we have leases to through the south interest across Mr. Earl, then Cameron Hill can still access the majority of our property from the north side. Thank you very much. I'll let y'all get that, and I want to point a couple of things out to you. Mr. Vance, thank you very much, and I apologize for not having those for the board already. If you look in the bottom left-hand corner of the map we just gave you, we'll start with that property first, you see Old Highway 51 Road, and you come up to a spot about three inches over to the right that shows an illegal gate. That is the gate that Cameron Hill Hunting Club put up there, and we had all of the area around there, and this, that gate has been there for many years, which would tend to show that it was abandoned by the county. I'm not going to argue that it wasn't because the county has not maintained it, and we can't say that the county's maintained it for any length of time. That road right there goes across some of Joe Earl's property, it goes across some of Potlatch's property, and it comes into the alternative access up at the top and goes into some of Buzzard Roost Holdings' property, and then goes into Bill Poole's property. At the second illegal gate you see up there, that Swamp Road goes straight across the center of his property to get to the access on the north side that they're proposing. We, as far as Mr. Martin and Mr. Dice with Buzzard Roost Holdings, and I am sure Mr. Poole doesn't have a problem to abandon the road that goes across the middle of his property. I don't think that's an issue, but I'll let Mr. Poole speak to that in just a second. What they are proposing and agreeing to as far as abandonment, as far as, uh, Mr. Poole and Buzzard Roost Holdings, is that part north of that second illegal gate is abandoned. The creek that you're seeing down in there is just past that illegal gate that prohibits access across into these northern areas owned by Fayard Huff. Patrick Martin and, uh, Ann Martin's property is the twenty acres that says Elwood J. Martin, just to the left of the Julian Fayard property in the northwest corner of the map. There's a twenty acre tract right there, and the only access to it is as they're proposing alternative access across Buzzard Roost Holdings or coming in from the illegal gate and bopping across to the left to that corner of Julian Fayard and Buzzard Roost Holdings. The north line starts at the s- over on the B Rail Road, you'll see where there's a fork in B Rail Road, about two and a half or three inches up, that's called Swamp Road on this map. That was taken, that is the road that is being sought to be abandoned from where it touches Bill Ho- Huff's property, all the way across to that third illegal gate sign on the north corner going across Huff. What they have done is propose to put on the red line that goes to the right of the illegal gate, they have proposed to come off of Swamp Road at that corner right there, and, Don, are y'all coming off the middle cor- could you come here just a second, make sure I'm saying them right? I don't have a copy of Don's map, just got it this morning, I think, and I don't know if it's even attached to this. Are y'all proposing to start here or here? Start there, okay. At the fork, okay. Yeah, they're proposing to abandon it from the, uh, north on the, the south side of the Bill Huff property and run due west to that third illegal gate and swap the road off of the ridge that's now known as Swamp Road. We're saying that we don't have a problem necessarily with that road being abandoned. However, it's gotta be at least as good as what you're abandoning, because that's our only access.
Gotta be at least what now?
As good as what's being abandoned. Now, it's not a really good road, but it's on top of a ridge, it's got sixty or seventy years of hard pack on it.
I just want to make sure I'm following.
Yeah, it's got si- the road.
Hold on one second, Bill Huff.
Yes, sir.
Or, you say right there at his property line where, where the solid red line is.
Yes.
Look like it's going west.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
On Swamp Road?
That's correct.
Goes all the way over to the illegal gate?
That's correct.
Y'all have no problem with abandoning that part?
If, if, the new road, where he's, the, the abandoned road would be that that goes north, kind of a circular shape along the top of that ridge. Goes from the bottom corner of Bill Huff's property, goes north, then turns west, turns kind of southwest, makes a loop and goes to the illegal gate.
And that, that is what is being proposed to abandon?
They're, they're proposing to abandon that, that's correct.
Are they also proposing to go where the illegal gate is, where we just stopped?
They, yes, sir.
Across to the Martin's property as well?
Well, no.
They are not proposing to abandon that?
I have not seen. They, they say they are, but we haven't got it in an agreement, we don't have any.
I know Paul's never been talking, guys, this been on the table for four months, and y'all can't even figure out what y'all wanting to do. I mean, that, that's what's really aggravating to me now, because I'm trying to follow what you were saying, and now I'm trying to understand actually what, what are y'all wanting to abandon and not abandon?
The whole Swamp Road is quote-unquote under consideration. I do not believe Huff and Fayard have asked that the south side of the Swamp Road be abandoned, and I haven't seen anything written that, that has requested that it be abandoned. They're asking that that part north half be abandoned, and then they are proposing an alternative access east to west.
All right, now hold on one second. Don, do you mind starting again and just, what do your clients want to abandon?
All right.
Or asking to abandon?
Don, they have, can you use this map? Can you use this map?
This bears it close.
Okay, that way they've got something to look at if you're using, okay.
Here we get the starting point.
Okay, so. What our proposal to abandon is where Swamp Road crosses the side line of Bill Howe's property.
Started right there.
Started right there, and line is back all the way around to where it says illegal gate, next corner.
Ooh.
Are y'all saying, how, uh, David, I can't understand, I'm Bill Poole.
Right, he's talking about, he's talking about Mr. Huff's property, Howe's property, to the nor- your north line.
Okay.
Is it Howe? Okay.
Okay, started on his line down there where the, where the white dotted line is.
That's right.
And going north, and then coming into Julian Fayard's property, and going on over to one of the first four or five illegal gates.
Yeah.
All right, and then y'all moving on across Fayard's property to the Martin's property. Is that what y'all are asking to abandon?
I don't know that that dotted line is part of what Swamp Road is, they would ask that be abandoned also.
On the Fayard?
On the Fayard property.
Going to the Martin's property? All right, just listening to what David's saying, that the Martin's property, that's the only access that they have, is that correct?
I think that about is, the only other, I don't know if they can get in other way maybe, but, but our guys are proposing they cut a woods road all the way from the point where Bill Howe's property hits his sideline where the road is, and they've gone all the way to where that illegal gate is so far, and they're planning to go on across to the Martin's and get to theirs as well.
Is Martin in favor of abandoning this or not?
No, sir, your honor, not at all. And that's not just Ann Martin and Elwood Martin, Mr. Elwood's pass that's now belonged to Ann, that property will be owned jointly by five, four, uh, to six Martin heirs, uh, as soon as Miss Ann dies.
Don, how would you, how would you propose to close that part to a person's property? And I'm just talking about the Martin's property now. How, how would you, how would you propose that when you really have, you have to give them a, something?
They'd have to have other access, I mean, access, they're, they have other access to them.
Is it another one that you know of?
I don't know if they come in from the south any kind of way, there's a dotted line going there, but I'm not familiar with that.
That's nothing but a four-wheeler trail.
All right, so now, as far as I'm concerned, Supervisor Griffin is, we're back to the illegal gate, because we really don't have, I mean, you really can't cut off somebody's property. I mean, you can't, can't do that.
I agree with you.
So we back to the illegal gate now, one of the five, I think.
Yeah.
On the, on the, what's that, Julian's property, back to Bill, Bill's property. That's really, I guess, that's really the portion at this point we need to understand then.
Yes.
Is that, I mean, is everybody following?
That's part of it, Judge, I mean, Judge, Mr. Stein, of course I have it.
Paul, is that, uh, do you, do you see what I'm saying?
Let's see if this is leave the gate you talk.
I know, they five of them on here. This, this property right here.
Yeah.
This road here.
See, it, it.
They come to cut off on his property and they can't cut it off.
It's maintainable, and it gets to the corner here, and Andy's willing to give him access on that line. If Fayard and he could give him access across that piece right there, leave this road alone.
Because he said it wasn't another, there's not another.
And they don't really have to, I mean, I drove my Jeep in there last year, all the way to right there, and he goes in there to get his equipment in there all the time to work this north side, but this one right here is the problem. That's the problem, we don't have a problem with coming off of this ridge and moving south, I don't think Mr. Poole knows, if this road, you can get equipped, because this is the only way he has to get to this north side of his home, because of that, because of the creek, and he's got two or three foot pots on this whole line.
I made no sense. Guys?
Yes, sir.
Let's, uh, let y'all go back and bump your head together again.
I agree.
And bring something back where, uh, the south here supervisor can understand.
Yes, sir.
And clear my mind, because I'm telling you, from my knowledge, uh, I'm not interested in the deer hunting club, I'm interested in the, in the person that owned the property. So come back here with something with the owners, try to help the owners have access to their property, not no deer hunting club, and I'm a big deer hunter. But right now, I know the area, you got me confused, so I know these other guys confused. And my mind is totally leaning towards, uh, uh, abandoning this whole doggone road, so you better work what might go. Mike, uh, first of all, between now, while you all working together, I gotta get a better clear understanding, is Swamp Road a road? Because we call Swamp Road, well, that's something like we, we, and the road manager that maintained it, we call Swamp Road a, a, a different whole road. We got to make sure that the road that we're calling is the, is the real Swamp Road, or is you all road the real Swamp Road. We got to clarify that ourselves, and all the same time, you all be working, trying to work out something. If it ain't nothing but an easement from, uh, of the other property that will get to their property, uh, you got Joe Earl, got a gate right there on one of the main entrances, somebody better include him in this conversation on, on you all, uh, coming together, or I'm not gonna be satisfied with all the information, because I found out suddenly after church that he hadn't really been talked to in the last three to six months that we've been going through this year. You better include him in the conversation, because he do own a big portion of this property and that road going back there. We gonna give y'all a month.
We're gonna table it to?
First meeting, uh, second meeting in April.
Mr. President, are you going to leave the public hearing open?
Uh, yeah, because they might bring some more information. Hopefully bring some more information. Be anything, that'd be my motion that, uh.
Say again.
All right, motion, second, Matt, Trey, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, guys, really get together and work.
Thank you.
Mike? Uh, before then, you need to really get with me and tell me the description of Swamp Road, because we got, we got two of them.
It's two, it's two roads here. And one, one's described on registry as the one that circles north.
That we never maintained, been there forty-seven years.
Hey, you have a month as well. So figure it out, you, you.
Figure it out, that's what we do, that's what we do.
Confuse all y'all about the road. Yeah, you gonna confuse us some more.
I'm gonna tell you, I'm not gonna confuse you, but I'm gonna tell y'all, it's a wagon wheel road, that's why y'all ain't got it on your map, maybe, because it was a wagon wheel road, the supervisor and them just opened up the road for the kids to go to school because you had people living back there. But out of all the people died out, they banned the roadway, they come back there to pull the curb and out the creek and everything. So that counts the road out, then the hunting club come through there and put gates up. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
So in my opinion, I don't think it ever been a public road.
They can't say a joke.
All right.
Well, uh, anybody else know, uh, uh, no, you don't have anymore.
No.
Let's move on to the center, all right?
Can I say something?
Come on, Mr. Poole.
I bought the seventy-five acres right in the middle there this summer. I didn't have a clue what I was getting into whenever I bought that seventy-five acres.
Where's your seventy-five acres?
Right in the middle of everything that y'all are talking about. Huh?
Show us on the map.
Yeah, sure.
My seventy-five acres, all right, you see the illegal gate there?
He's talking about the northwest illegal gate.
All right, but just come down here, all right, and here, Joe Earl, all of this is Joe Earl's property on the side right here, Andy, and when you get to this point right here.
Yeah.
Andy's place is to the left, mine is to the right, so this forty here and that forty there.
They gotta take care of this.
Or, or mine.
What about this?
That's mine.
Okay, so you're saying this and this are yours?
Right, it says Brad, what's it say?
Where, yeah, they show where about, where that seventy-five acres.
These two sections.
Those two sections here.
Right.
And if it were not for a cemetery in there, it'd be eighty acres.
Are they talking about that part of Swamp Road?
Uh-oh.
Or this part over here? They talking about this part?
Got Brad Bumgarner.
Yeah.
I bought it from Brad.
See, see the creek right there, so, creek right there.
Yeah.
And so, only way for him to get to his property over here is coming.
It's through here.
I think I'm probably the most affected person, and I have the least knowledge of what's, what's happening.
You definitely in the mix, I'll put it that way. You in the mix. You in the mix.
Did we get a motion or no, uh, consider, all right?
Got a motion for approval?
Right. Motion by Gerald, second by Carl. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
All right.
All right, moving on to Tommy.
Mr. President, members of the board, up until today, I thought the most confusing exercise that the county engaged in was redistricting. However, I see that trying to figure out Swamp Road, it seems to be more challenging than redistricting, so, uh...
That name does, does show fit that road.
Uh, well, you're absolutely right, Mr. President, but it...
The illegal gate, don't leave that off.
Uh, that's, that's for y'all to figure out, and so, uh, appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this morning. Of course, I am Tommy Carden with Butler Snow, and we represent you in your redistricting efforts. Uh, we've already adopted a Board of Supervisors plan. You did that on February the seventh. Uh, after you did that, then we started in earnest trying to develop plans for the Justice Court Judge and Constable districts. And it's a little bit different exercise than the Board of Supervisors, because there are only four Justice Court Judge districts, um, and as opposed to five Supervisor districts. And so the ideal size of the Justice Court districts is a little bit larger. Uh, your total population in your county is a little over a hundred and nine thousand, and so your ideal population for your Justice Court Judge districts is a little over twenty-seven thousand. By statute, uh, you fall in the population category that allows for four Justice Court Judge districts and Constable districts. That's why you have that particular number. So what we did after you adopted your Supervisor plan, then we moved forward, and we worked with the Justice Court Judges and the Constables and received input from them. We followed the same guidelines that you had previously adopted for all of your districts, uh, the, um, the guidelines that you adopted back in October of two thousand twenty-one. We developed a plan, uh, which we believe complies with your guidelines. That plan, uh, is the plan that's posted on your website. We posted that on March the ninth, uh, so that not only you, but, uh, all members of the public could see that plan and be aware what the proposals, um, what the proposal consists of. Essentially, what had to happen with, um, with redrawing the districts, District Two, Judge Griffin, the district Judge Griffin represents, and Constable Sims, uh, had a significant loss of population. So we had to, we had to get more people to try to bring that district, uh, within the population guidelines. And, um, we did that by coming a little southward to south, uh, south, southeastward, uh, with District Two, and then a little bit over in the Flora area, and then a little bit right around, uh, the area, kind of around Gluckstadt and Lake Caroline and that area. Uh, once we did that, then, of course, we had to make some slight modifications in Districts One, Three, and Four to accommodate that and to achieve the population equality that we were looking at. Uh, came up with a really good plan in terms of the population deviation. You all will recall that, um, in dealing with your districts, the goal is to get that overall maximum deviation below ten percent. And, uh, this plan actually is a four point one zero percent overall maximum deviation. The highest population, uh, district i- is now District Four, uh, with one point eight seven percent deviation, that is one point eight seven above the ideal, and District Three is the one that has the lowest, which is at two point two three. So it's a very good plan from that standpoint, and, uh, it achieves all of the objectives that, um, that need to be achieved. And, um, I have presented a, a proposed order, uh, that would be before you this morning. It's essentially the same type of order you adopted, uh, for your districts, except it just changes, uh, the statutory references, because they are different in terms of things, and of course, it's a different map, which will be attached to that particular order. But that will be before you for consideration this morning and for, um, for your consideration and approval. Mr. President, does anybody have any questions?
Any question? Not. Say the motion.
Motion.
Motion by Sheila.
Second.
Second by Carl. Uh, in other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, appreciate that.
Very good job, CFPDD, appreciate your help on it.
Yeah. Thank y'all, guys.
Okay.
All right, move right along.
Hey, one, one other thing, too, I, that I just wanted to throw in, Tommy, and I think CFPDD, we're talking about, uh, y'all gonna start working with election commissioners on the precincts at this point.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stein, it's a very good point. As a matter of fact, that's why we went ahead and tried to move as quickly as we could to get a plan in place, so that, uh, the clerk and the election commissioners can start that process. And they're ready to, we're ready to start.
Okay.
All right, uh, time of whoever's election commissioner, I don't see District Five, uh, I'm interested in adding some precincts, uh, Valley and their road, uh, Fairview Church, uh, that those, that is stay a precinct, but add the next church that up there, uh, by the fire station, as a precinct, if they're willing, Shelton, if they're willing to take us on.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully, I can get District Four and District One out of District Five, maybe the school might let us use that for precincts down there. So it would give us three precincts down at, uh, Yandere Cardo, because it is a whole lot of vote, because you got three Supervisor districts down there.
Mr. President, that's exactly the kind of information we'll need to know, and so I would just ask each one of you, if you, if you have that type of request, uh, just let us and CFPDD know, and then we'll be working with the election commissioners and the clerk to work through those kinds of issues.
Well, you know, I'm interested in making sure we target all of the precincts that are split and being utilized by more than two Supervisor districts. You know, um, when we talked about this earlier, and we had our public hearing, it seemed that, um, someone had the impression that the Supervisor was responsible for setting the precincts up. And I hadn't, you know, in thirty-two years, I never set a precinct.
Well, that's why we went ahead and got the plans done, so we can get the right folks working on that, Mr. Banks, so we're gonna move forward at your direction and do that.
Okay, thank you.
So basically, what you're asking is, if we have situation, we would like to change a precinct, something, work through you and election commissioners?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, move right along. Darian Warren.
Mr. President, I have not seen Darian here this morning.
There, there he is.
Darian walks in.
Yep, right up there. Good morning.
This morning, I have a brief update regarding the Madison County Broadband Initiative, uh, project, which is to, uh, the whole purpose was to provide broadband services to an underserved particular area of Madison County in the northeast portion of Madison County, which consisted of about twenty-nine hundred, uh, service points or, uh, residents. Uh, so the last part of this effort, we've been in the RFP process, and the deadline for proposals, uh, for submission of proposals from, uh, potential independent service providers, that deadline was March ninth, uh, which was a Wednesday. Uh, since then, uh, the county, uh, did receive, uh, four proposals, uh, to provide, uh, broadband services to this particular area that was, that has been identified. Uh, as it stands right now, and what we identified in that proposal in terms of next steps and the schedule, uh, we propose or would like to ask that the board take those proposals under advisement, um, and also move forward with identifying the county's, uh, selection committee to begin reviewing those proposals according to the selection criteria that was identified in the RFP, to score and rank, uh, each proposal, to verify and ensure that they, um, were submitted based on the, um, uh, submission guidelines and the, um, um, technical criteria, uh, that we set forth, uh, for this process.
All right, I entertain a motion to take the proposal under advisement.
Move.
Motion by Carl.
Second.
Second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
All right, thank you.
Uh, I'd like to go forward, uh, send the, uh, selection committee. There'll be, uh, number one, you, Darian, Shelton, Mike, uh, myself, Gerald, one, two, three, four, or five. Uh, do we need anybody else? All right.
Second.
Shelton, you need anybody else?
I was just thinking, we probably need an odd number.
There were five.
That's five.
I'll second the motion, make that was the motion.
All right, uh, mo- motion made by myself, second by Carl, in other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Uh, one request from this election commission, uh, let's go to work, have it ready for next board meeting. All right, Darian?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Ho- ho- hold, before you leave, before you leave, I would like to offer up for a motion that, uh, we authorize Wagner Engineer to apply for the reconnect grant, uh, for broadband. That's a motion.
Second.
All right, in the discussion?
This, this is the same grant that we talked about three or four months ago, that we didn't go with at the time, because we didn't have everything together, but now we do with the study, and so, you know, I, I'm good with it.
Okay.
Hopefully, we'll, we'll get, uh, some other help, financial help with broadband.
Yes, sir. Would you say, would you state it is correct?
Thank you.
Uh, if you need anything from us, contact Shelton.
Will do.
All right, and, uh, all in favor, what?
Yeah.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me push back up, where was it here? Kimberly Banks!
Kimberly Banks.
Attorney, a law.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors.
Good morning.
I'm here, I'm Kimberly Banks, attorney for the City of Canton. Uh, the city is here to respectfully request that Madison County consider its garbage collection in the City of Canton's newly annexed area for at least a month or two. Um, the city has made immediate plans to pick up that garbage, but we would need at least a month or two before those plans can be implemented. And so we're here today to make that request, and we will consider any fees or costs that that would incur the county. And we have the mayor here, and we have our landfill director here also, and they would like to join in.
All right. Mayor, thank you, lawyer, didn't say it at all unless you just want to say something.
Well, I don't actually think there's anything else to say, uh, for the fact that we certainly waited that you would, uh, take this under contemplation, uh... Oh, I didn't know I needed a mic, but, uh, that, uh, that you would take this under contemplation, uh, as, uh, the city attorney said, for a month or two, uh, to continue the garbage pickup in the annexed area. And, uh, as she said, we too would take under advisement any costs or fees that might be, uh, incurred or concerned.
Mr. Banks?
We are aware that there may be some cost incurred, and, and we know we haven't had a, a long time to vet that with you all, but we are aware that may be an issue, so...
All right, Mike, we can do this?
Yeah, yes, sir. Um, excuse me, on the agenda, item thirty-four, waste management contract approval.
Mm-hmm.
The, uh, annexed area that, speaking of, is not in this contract.
Okay.
So you could amend the contract to add it, or you could have a separate contract for waste management for it, depends on you, but we negotiated the contract with waste management, it's, uh, all the terms are set, but it hadn't been approved, so it's up, up to you.
Well, Mike, it is in the contract that we have currently...
Currently have.
No.
Well, hold on a second.
Not, it's not the annexed area.
Uh, that, that's why, because I think you're, I miss, I guess I misunderstood. The contract that's on the agenda for approval today...
Yes.
Is, does not include that area.
Does not, no.
No.
Okay.
It was in a previous contract.
So it doesn't bother this contract at all, that's, that we are looking to be, to approve today?
Unless you want to amend this contract today to include it. You could amend it to include it, because you haven't approved it.
Would it be better?
Or you could go separately and ask waste management separately?
Do another separate.
It'd be better to have a separate contract, and it's my understanding, you're only looking at a couple of months. Uh, I would imagine, though, we probably are looking at, uh, going until July.
At the most, we, we, we had, like I say, we have made immediate plans, we have purchased, we've done a RFP for a truck, so we've done that, uh, it's on its way, uh, we're looking at the end of April, so, um, we, we, we're, we're in the immediate plans of doing that, so we, but we gotta get the truck and get the route, get all that down, so that will take...
Do another contract?
Let me ask you this, Mr. Griff, so, so it doesn't affect the contract we're going to approve?
No.
And so, at this point, at the end of, what, April, that area was going directly to the City of Canton, which, which y'all currently have a contract with waste management now?
Is it April first, correct?
End of April.
End of April.
End of April. So y'all currently have contract with waste management now?
We do.
Can y'all not just work out something with them for this area, and then the BOS would be just totally out of it, Board of Supervisors?
That's another option.
Yeah.
I mean, that way...
Yes.
That way y'all can work your own contract.
Yep.
Let's turn it first.
Don't need to be involved.
I mean, to me, that would like to be the easiest way and the simplest way, y'all just go and work, work through them.
Have y'all attempted to do that, uh...
We, we've had some issues, um, that we, that we've discussed in executive session that we don't want to discuss publicly, but, um...
I ain't got nothing to do with that.
We, um, that's an option.
Well, let me say this also, that...
The new contract that we have, the new contract, when does it begin? What's the beginning time?
Has to be June, April, May.
May first.
May first.
Okay, so we will be continuing to collect until the end of April.
So you all be, you all will be continuing to collect the newly annexed area until May first, is that correct?
May first, that's when we start a new contract with the annexed area. So that gives you all time to, to kind of get straight and, and you, you got a contract also with waste management, where you all can work out something, y'all should be able to work out something.
Yeah, that'd be most helpful.
In six weeks.
I would think so.
Yeah.
Texas, Mayor Westside?
Yes, sir.
May first.
May first.
Okay.
So I was in, we found the depression was April first.
It was May first.
May first.
It was May first.
Now, April fools.
Yeah.
All right?
Okay, then.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you all.
Back to you.
All right, moving right along, where are we? Anita, uh, Circuit Clerk, come right along.
Mr. President, board members, uh, just before the meeting this morning, I was told that there were actually two items that, uh, Circuit Clerk wanted to address. The second, uh, uh, location of election equipment at precincts was not included on the agenda, so I apologize for that.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I'm here on behalf, um, well, with my, with the election commissioners this morning, Helen Carney and President here, Pat Truesdale. Anyway, the first item that we had here was, um, just want to kind of acknowledge the, um, contracts between... between the parties. You know, we have an election coming up and it's the primary and normally the, the parties run the primaries and it's the Republican Party and the Democrat Party. And at the signing of the, the contracts, the Democrat Party was going to be involved, but there was some, some, but, but the Democrat Party is not going to be involved in the election commission, I mean, in the.
A candidate withdrew?
Yes, that's right. A candidate withdrew and so only the Republican Party is going to be involved, but I went ahead since.
In the primary.
In the primary and so since there was a signed contract, I'm gonna go ahead and present that contract also for acknowledgement. So I think you may have them. I think I gave them to Cynthia, so.
President, I make a motion to acknowledge both contracts, item thirty-two, thirty-three, with the Republican Executive Committee and the Democrat, Democrat Party Executive Committee.
Got a motion by Gerald, I second.
Second.
Second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Okay.
Way off, Anita.
Okay, so the next item is the delivery of the election commission, the election equipment on the day before the primary. I think we've got a little issue going on with that and I'm gonna let our election commissioner, Ms. Truesdale, handle that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have, in the last two years, used a vendor that had to then rent a truck with the lift gate. Our equipment is bulky and heavy and a ramp just does not suffice as far as trying to put a piece of equipment about the size of this podium on the trucks. And so we need something with the lift gate. And so we had reached out to the vendor and he indicated he would not even be able to get them this year. And we have historically, before this, been able to get them just from other rental companies, but we're at a time right now, we need to secure that right now. We need three trucks to do four routes. And then we also need four of the county workers that would give us assistance. They have always been so helpful to us. They know the layout of the county, they know where these precincts are located, they know how to help direct. By using the moving company, they strictly were just loading it, driving it, unloading it, and then you had to get somebody to place it inside the precincts. We need a system that would allow us to have it actually totally delivered and set up. So we need to plead with you to help us with this assistance of delivering the equipment because it is delicate and we need it delivered in a fashion that it's going to continue to work for years to come.
It's expensive.
And it's very expensive. That's what we were able to get part of with that grant earlier in the year and so we want to utilize our equipment in the best fashion.
Mr. President, I have a question. You know, we used to do this and then y'all came in front of us saying that it wasn't good and wasn't working. So what, what has changed? And y'all, and we, y'all asked us to go to the vendor, and which we did, on y'all's request, and now y'all saying the vendor's not working and y'all want us to come back as a county. I'm, I'm just asking.
No, that's not my understanding, Supervisor Stein. We were told by the county that we had to change and go with this vendor and that was not our choice at all.
Who told you that, by the way?
Mr. Vance.
Mr. Supervisor, about four years ago, we had difficulty getting a commitment from truck rental companies that we would have trucks available for elections.
Right.
So during that time, after talking to Penske, to Herc, to Hertz, to all of the different rental companies, and not being able to find a commitment for sufficient number of trucks, we turned to commercial moving companies.
Right.
And the commercial moving company at the time that was selected is Mississippi Van Lines, who we do business with, they made a commitment to provide trucks to us. The reference that you heard to ramps is, is important here because Mississippi Van Lines trucks have ramps, not lifts. After the agreement was made with the board, the, there was a, a preference, no, I think I would say it was a requirement, that Mississippi Van Lines not use the ramps to load their trucks. And at that point, that forced Mississippi Van Lines into having to rent trucks with lifts.
Right.
So now Mississippi Van Lines is in the same situation that we were in several years ago, that they are unable to get a commitment to have trucks with lifts from the various companies. So, so basically, we hired them to move and then they can't get the, they cannot rent this additional equipment that the, that is being required. So we're back to where we were three, four years ago.
Okay, so that's what you're saying, is that they can't get the lifts?
Can't provide what we need.
And that's, and that's what we needed, lift trucks, and the county can. Is that what?
I can't answer that. I, I found out that this was an issue about a quarter till nine this morning. So I, I can't tell you, but if, if Mississippi Van Lines cannot rent these trucks, I suspect that we cannot rent these trucks. Now, Mississippi Van Lines is a professional moving company. They move people every day of the year.
They do.
And if, if their ramps don't work, then we need to hold them responsible and that's a conversation with Mississippi Van Lines. Rather than telling them how to move this, we need to hire them to do it and, and get out of the way and let them do it.
Pat, the Mississippi Van Lines, are they telling you they can safely load the equipment with their ramps? Because their trucks, some of their trucks are almost ground level.
The ones they've brought here are not, they're off the ground this far. And the ramp, it doesn't extend at an elevation that makes it safe to load something the size of this.
Well, they're professional movers. What are they, are they saying they can continue to load the equipment safely?
They bring a driver only and then they expect us to load it. That's why we were using the road department.
Well, have y'all explored the option of having their movers do all the work?
That's what we thought we were getting to begin with, but they don't want to do that.
I, I'm sorry, the original agreement was for them to load. That was the agreement. The, the change was, the change was made by people on the ground that day because I walked out and asked Mississippi Van Lines, why are your people standing against the wall instead of loading? And they were told that, they were told by someone that the equipment was too sensitive for them to load and their people backed off and road department employees loaded the trucks. Do you want to? I don't know what you want to do.
I agree in that particular instance that that was another election commissioner that made that as a quick decision on the spot because one of the machines tipped over. They caught it before it hit the ground, but we didn't feel like a $2,000 machine that it needed to be loaded haphazardly.
So you thought road department employees could do it more sa, or safer than?
They were much better at it than the moving people.
They're used to it, too.
That's why they would do it at first.
That's right.
Can I say something to Mississippi Van Lines always, every sing, every single time they came, that, that there were different people that came each time?
Right.
So, you know, they weren't, they weren't used to it. Every single time they came, there were, there was a different person.
I can. You may remember at budget meetings last summer, the board asked me to get the road department out of this process and I met with the election commission and we discussed some things that needed to happen and, and then today, here we are several months later, I'm hearing this again, so.
Do we, do we currently have the contract with the moving company at this point or has it been canceled?
We don't.
Know what?
We don't have a contract.
You don't have a contract at all?
We.
To, to move the equipment?
We've been just calling and reserving it ahead of time as the elections came up and it's just not working.
It was an election by election agreement as opposed to a blanket.
But y'all haven't tried at this point?
I did. I called Scott at Mississippi Van Lines, he called me back. He said that he could not do it for June or November this year.
Even with ramps?
He didn't, he didn't say anything about the ramps. I didn't ask about the ramps.
Were you asking him for a lift truck?
For the lift, for the lift.
At that point, you were asking that?
Yes, I was.
Okay.
So the road department employees and you guys can't come together and rent Penske trucks? That's what, y'all can't figure that out?
Well, I, I didn't hear you.
Well, the road department employees and you guys can't come together and rent trucks with lifts? Penske trucks?
I feel like we could. We just need authority to do that.
So we give y'all budgetary authority, it's on y'all to get them rented and we give you the road department employees, but y'all are responsible for getting the trucks?
Can we get four employees? It's thin in the past.
Right, we would need the four employees to go pick the trucks up and drive them. I can't drive a Penske truck up here.
President, you know, I think Supervisor Baxter's hitting on something good, but I think it would be good to work through the administrator and for them to resolve this, try to resolve this issue.
Yep, and, and I think it will too, but she's saying four employees. I don't believe four is gonna be to cover this whole county sufficient. It's gonna be more or less shut down, whole department.
Mr. President, can we ask the road manager how many people have been sent for this purpose?
Step up, Mr. Road Manager.
On the election, we always, during the day of putting our boot, we always end up like from eighteen to twenty of our employees gone.
On, on putting out?
Putting out and taking up. So we be shut down them two days.
Or delivery and pickup is eighteen per day?
Per day.
But, but what, what truck do you be using?
They're rental truck. They normal rental truck, we'll go pick up, we have a driver.
Mr. President, this is eighteen road department employees when someone else is bringing the truck and driving the truck.
Oh.
Okay.
Now, have y'all, I'm just out of curiosity, there's eighty-two counties in the state having elections. Have y'all reached out to one of them to see how they're doing it?
Yes.
How are they doing it?
Well, Hines County that's right next door to us, they use a vendor who delivers the equipment and ESNS, but we've not been able to get approval for that, so we're still at your mercy about what do we do on election day.
I don't have any problem getting quotes from a vendor. I would rather do that than have eighteen for fifteen road department employees paying the day off.
Well, actually, I think we've always had, they've turned out and we've had great response, but the most we would need would be two per truck. That's the most I think we would need because as election commissioners, we go around and follow the route and give verbal instruction about where to place and hook up and things like that. I just personally cannot lift it.
Right.
But we'd be glad to reach out and try to get some other quotes if that's your pleasure, but we're getting close to having to do something immediately, so I'm just concerned about our timeframe here.
Shelton?
Yes, sir.
You and Kenea work with the election commission?
Yes, sir.
And, and make this happen.
Thank you.
Well, I'd also like to see if you can get proposals from vendors. You said that Hines County used a vendor you hadn't gotten approval for and I don't know, we hadn't, since I've been here, I hadn't had a request for a vendor or any information on the cost of the vendor. So we need to get the cost of vendors and see what, you know, what's that gonna be like.
Well, this last budget cycle, I did list it and specify the, you know, Mississippi Van Lines, this many elections, that sort of thing. That is built into the budget. But now this time, he's saying he cannot provide the equipment we need, which is the air ride, which is one that's got good suspension on it, and the lift gate. And that way, you know, you can take care of the equipment because we're trying to get the longevity extended as much as we can. We don't want to tear it up as we deliver it. So that's where we are. I'd be glad to solicit some more and come back to you at the next meeting if that's your pleasure. We can work with Mr. Vance to see what we need, but we need to do something as quickly as possible.
All right.
Carl, are you asking for a motion for vendor quotes? Yeah, that's, that's, why don't we just do that? Because it seem like we got to do that. I like to make a motion that we get, that the election commissioners provide.
Working with Mr. Vance, yes.
Some vendor quotes.
Okay.
Mr. Banks, I think that Hines County uses a company called Terry's Services. They are essentially a moving company.
Terry Installation.
Terry Installation, I'm sorry, that's the name of it. And they are essentially a moving company and they will come in and do your moving just like Mississippi Van Lines.
Exactly. Okay.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Banks, second from Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank y'all.
Get done, one way or the other.
Okay, yes.
All right, let me move out here, see what election commissioner. We had Drew, you up, building ground director.
Morning, Mr. President, Board of Supervisors. I have two items this morning. Both are from waste management. One is for the approval of the solid waste collection contract. The other is for approval of the recycling services contract. We advertised requests for proposals, had a opening on Tuesday, February first, 2022. Waste management was the low bidder on both contracts. After we went through, we are recommending to execute those contracts. Are there any questions on recycling services or solid waste collection?
All right.
Mr. President, I make a motion for approval on both contracts, solid waste and the recycling contract.
Motion by Trey, second by Gerald.
Yep, sure, boy.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drew.
Gerald Sutton was a little bit longer than his motion, but that's okay.
All right, next up is Tim, the engineer.
Oh, okay. Yo, 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 what's up?
That text and email I got, I sure didn't like it, Tim.
I understand, that's what I was just talking to Shelton about. We're gonna take that up a little later in the meeting. First item I have at this point is to award the contract for curb and gutter and roadwork on Bridge Park Circle in Bainbridge subdivision to Bulldog Construction Company for a fee of forty-six, forty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars.
Motion. Motion by Sheila, second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Next item I have is, on March eleventh, we requested CE and I proposals for reunion Parkway Phase Three. At this point, the engineering department requests that the board select Stan Tech to perform CE and I services for the project and authorize the engineering department to begin contract negotiations with them.
Second. Motion by Sheila, second by Trey. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, that's all I have, thank you.
All right. Is there a for Tim?
This might be new business, but I discussed with Supervisor Banks, the restriping of Cedar Hill. Did you have a quote ready for us?
I do not have a quote, but it's, I can get you two quotes. If we, we authorize that, then that's something I can get in the next day or two.
Boo.
Second.
Motion by Carl, second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Just so we're clear, this is striping, it's gonna have the reflectors in the middle, correct?
It is. It will. Yes, we don't put in striping any, down anymore without the reflectors.
And we're, and we're actually talking about from four sixty-three.
All the way to twenty-two.
Okay.
Right.
It does currently has no striping at all, does it?
It's pretty faded.
Okay.
All right, Scott.
Mr. President, Board of Supervisors, first item I have is number thirty-eight. It's Leila Davenport, so request permission to place a mobile home in a residential district. It's a request permission to place a mobile home in a residential district. This was due to a structure fires located 185 McDougal Road, Supervisor District 5.
Motion to approve.
Is that coming?
And a motion by Sheila, second by Carl, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Go ahead, Miss Davenport.
Next item I have, number 39, is a mining permit on Highway 43. We've had some issues with the conditional use petition. I would like to turn it over to Mike, our board attorney, on his recommendation on how to address this.
Mike?
Okay. Thought you were gonna say more about it. Excuse me, voice. So the issue is a mining, a mining permit, which is issued by DEQ. But for us, your issue is a hearing that was conducted for conditional use. Changing the use of a piece of land for mining. So in order for that to happen, to prove conditional use, you've got to have publication, notice in a paper. You've got to have a physical sign planted on the lands or the surrounding landlords could know about it. And those things were done by the county, but we found out that's a problem. Problem number one is that a notice was put in the Madison County Journal for the wrong date. We made a mistake by a year. So instead of December, some date in December, the notice said December, you know, that the hearing was in 2021 instead of 2022. So if anybody would read the Madison County Journal, they would see that the date was 21. The hearing in 22, and it was a year off. So it was the county's error, it was a clerical error, but it was an error by the county. All right, number two. A physical sign was put on the land where the conditional use was to be done. It was done by Scott, put the sign down. Someone soon thereafter pulled the sign up. It's not just that the wind blew it down, the sign was gone. Sign was gone. And we have a petition by 50 or so local residents that they never saw a sign. One of the 50 is Kay Base, who confirmed that she never saw the sign. So I'm not here saying that the applicant did it. We don't know. We know that the sign was gone because when Mr. Weeks came back to pull it up, it was gone. And our very own president of the board drives by there every day. He tells me he never saw a sign. So, thirdly, some of the local residents are looking into this, and they've told me that their application to DEQ for mining permit, there are material untruths on it. We don't know that. That's their process, but, you know, it just seems to me that the hearing was held by planning and zoning, but nobody opposed it because they didn't know that was a hearing. The date was wrong in the paper, and the local sign was that Scott put there was uprooted. So nobody appeared to oppose the conditional use permit because they didn't know. So now we have a permit signed by about 50 local residents, all very concerned that there's a mining dirt pit that they didn't know about, and they say that had they known about it, they would have opposed it. So that's the situation. So we could you could ask us to continue investigating this, and we know there was no sign, and we know that we made a mistake on the date. So that's a problem. So he did receive a conditional use permit, and I believe that it came before you, and you approved it. You approved the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Board, but you didn't think that was an issue because nobody opposed it at the PZ meeting, and nobody opposed it here?
So
I'm just gonna make sure. First of all, we had the wrong public state.
Yes.
Got a sign coming up missing.
Yes.
Came in front of the BOS, and we approved it. We give the we give the person a permit.
Conditional, conditional use.
Yeah, to go ahead and start mining.
The mining permit comes from the DEQ.
But we give him what he needed.
From us.
From us. Is he, is he, is that person out there mining there?
I don't know.
I think Weatherden kind of held him off, but he hadn't done much.
I haven't seen any activity out there. I've seen where they've cleared some, but I haven't seen any trucks coming in and out.
Is the petition?
He got, he got, he's equipment there.
With that being said, don't we need to go back and correct a lot of these wrongs?
I think you should reconsider what you did. About proving the conditional use permit, you should reconsider it, and we ought to send him back to P&Z for rehearing.
I agree. I think we need to go back.
In the community, we get involved.
We need to send something to stop him also. Till we go back through that.
Yeah, go back through the process and make sure it's right when it comes to us, or if it gets to us.
That, I guess that'd be my motion to authorize Scott to send a letter or whatever to decease going forward until he go back through the process. And Riley? Mike could get that motion correct. Is that the right motion? You need mine? What the planning and zoning?
You need a motion to reconsider the approval of the conditional use permit and send the matter back to P&Z for a rehearing and investigation and a rehearing.
Investigation?
P&Z.
All right, that's my motion, along with the motion including in there that Scott send a stop moving forward order. That's my motion.
Second.
Second by Carl. Any other discussion?
Ma'am? The planning commission will be meeting the 14th of April. I advertise for everything that's going on next month's agenda tomorrow, so I can expedite it and go ahead and get it on next month's agenda for P&Z.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Supervisor?
Carry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And I'm just throwing this out, if there's a cost to the person asking for the permit, if that person has already paid the cost, he went through the right procedures.
Yes.
You know, to me, we need to somehow know to waive the cost if it's gonna actually cost him again.
It'd be a cost, yeah.
I mean, need to look into that, I would think, and not charge him again if it's our mistake.
We'll just get the board to waive the cost?
Yep.
On the application?
Well, after you looked into it and say that is the case.
It is. It was our mistake. Shouldn't charge them for our mistake.
You know, if it's ours, you're right, Supervisor Banks. I don't think he needs to pay it again, or she.
All right. Mike?
There are 50 people that signed a petition.
You gotta
As an allegation that the applicant had material untruths on the DQ application. So that's not our issue, that's DEQ's issue, but I think DEQ should be alerted. Somebody may have applied for a mining permit with cost of price. You want us to do that, or you want the protesters, the opponents to do it?
I think if we do, if it has been brought to our attention, I think we have the responsibility of just notifying the DEQ and then let them do their job. I would think, since it's been brought to our attention.
It wasn't brought to our attention. It was.
Is it a petition? Is it, it's part of the petition?
Yep.
Then we ought to give DEQ the petition.
All right. You up now, Mike? You got anything else? All right, Shelton.
Mr. President, Supervisors, I would like to draw your attention to item number 40 on your agenda today. There is an effort in the Mississippi Legislature to provide what is called upper payment limits for ambulance providers through the Medicaid program. And this is a request by the emergency medical service community in Mississippi for you to pass a resolution in support of this program. This is not something that would directly cost Madison County. This would be, the way this program would work is very similar to the way that the upper limit program works for government-owned hospitals and nursing homes. There would be a fee paid by the ambulance provider, not by Madison County, but by the ambulance provider to the Medicaid program, and in return for that fee, they would be allowed to participate in the upper payment limit program that would then provide additional Medicaid funds for the operation of an ambulance service. And you have been requested to, by the Pafford Ambulance, your provider, as well as the emergency medical services community to support this.
All right. Any comments?
Make a motion for approval.
Motion by Gerald, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. What else, Shelton?
The next item on your agenda is property and casualty insurance renewal. You may remember that sometime about 2017, we began using MACET, Mississippi Association of Supervisors Insurance Trust, for our property and casualty insurance. And about 2019, I believe, we switched to include also law enforcement coverage as part of this policy. So now they cover all of our liability and property and casualty coverage. It is time to renew this. The premium will be for the next year will be $818,417.61 based on our current building coverage and equipment that we have insured. Our agent from Fisher Brown Bottral is here if you wish to speak with him. And if I remember correctly, this is approximately a 5% increase, which is primarily driven by the replacement cost increases that would be associated with the coverage.
All right. Motion by Sheila, they're second.
Second.
Second by Carl. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right. Come on up, comptroller, Nasa.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The first item I have is the approval of the budget amendments and the NIFN cash transfers with one correction to item number one. That should be $130,000 and not $20,000.
All right. I like $20,000.
Make a motion for that.
With that change?
Yeah.
Motion by Gerald, second by Carl, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
The next three items, number 43, 44, and 45, is for the approval of the general claims docket and then two payroll dockets.
Motion by Sheila.
Second.
Second by Trey, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
The next item is the approval of the feet floor claim docket.
Motion by Sheila.
Second.
Second by Carl, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. We through?
I would also ask for our approval to make the payment for the fire truck we received this morning in the amount of $388,353 to Sunbelt Fire.
Move.
All right, motion by Carl, second by Sheila. What we paying for?
Sir?
That $388.
Fire truck.
We got to tell folk about that. We can't just pay $388,000 for? All right, I see some young men coming in there. They look familiar, so it must be going towards Valley View this $388,000.
Okay, I'll step aside.
All right.
Yeah, good morning.
Good morning, good morning.
Yeah, it came a little late, but it's outside now. It's a brand-new, a big fire truck that's going to Valley View. And I have members of the Valley View Fire Department that want to address the supervisors at this time.
Come on up, chief, assistant chief, whoever talk.
My name is Salon Rose, Chief of Valley View. I want to thank you all for doing this for us in the fire services, life safety, property conservation, and fire suppression. And with this piece of equipment, we could do that. We could do that. We want to thank you.
Guys, come on up, assistant chief there.
I'm Marcus Gillo, Assistant Chief, and also the president of the Valley View Fire Protection District. I want to thank you all for working with us. We appreciate all you do. We appreciate the facilities you have put in our care and the equipment you have put in our care. And we will do our due diligence to uphold the standards of Madison County and make you guys look good and also make Valley View Fire Department look good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you all. We don't do nothing but take your taxpayer money and go out there and buy stuff. You all go out there and do the work, you know, getting up out of bed all the time of night. They happen to be working full-time jobs, so we thank you all for you all's service. All right, what else?
The truck's outside after the meeting. If y'all would like to come see it, you're welcome to come see it.
All right, good. Now I need to carry that motion. Who made that motion? Sheila?
Carl and Sheila, thanks.
All right, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. All right, guys, thank you all. Uh, whatever. Riley, you up?
Uh, nothing, Mr. President.
Uh, sure.
I don't have anything today, thank you.
All right, old business.
Mr. President, there's a bank security under our comptroller we haven't done yet.
Uh, Mr. President, that is an item for property security that needs to be discussed in executive session. If we could hold that item.
Okay, really?
Thank you.
Old business. New business. All right, we need to go executive session. I entertain that motion. Although we don't need a motion.
Close the termination.
Close the termination. Riley, go tell them. For what? Litigation or whatever?
Litigation, item very short.